Okay, I'm gonna welcome everybody. If everybody could go ahead and please stand for the prayer and the presentation of the flag.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious God, we give you thanks for the privileges we enjoy here in Talbot County, for fair elections and the rule of law, for civil discourse and local government, and for engaged citizenry. We thank you for widespread access to health care and ask for wisdom and guidance to help those without. We give you thanks for housing and ask for wisdom and guidance in making it more affordable. We give you thanks for food and ask for wisdom and guidance in protecting farming and the farmers and watermen who produce our food and the food banks who distribute it to those who cannot afford enough. We thank you for all the blessings as we enjoy this place. Bless us now as we work for your people in your most holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody tonight. Unfortunately, Mrs. Hayth and Mr. Stepp can't make it tonight, so we want to wish them the best and wish they were here. So let's go ahead and get started with the agenda, council. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda tonight?
Yep.
Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Next is the minutes on June 10th and July 1st. Council's had a chance to take a look at that. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Next is the dispersments of July 15th and July 22nd. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to that? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, first up tonight on the agenda is Program Open Space. Emily, you want to come on up?
Yeah.
Okay. Tell us some good things about that. Parks are Rec.
Hey, so, um, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Emily Gomer. I am the Director of Parks and Recreation for Talbot County, and thank you for allowing me to make this presentation this evening. So, uh, every year we are given Program Open Space funds from this state with the, through DNR, and, um, every year we can allocate that money towards different development projects or acquisitions that, projects that Parks and Recreation does. So, this year, um, we are putting in our annual program. This just goes to DNR, and it just tells us some kind of a general idea of what we are looking to use those funds for this, this year. You do have like five years to use up the funds in development, so, uh, some of the funds we are kind of banking for different, um, projects that we have coming up.
I see.
So, this year we are looking to, um, put in our Program Open Space Annual Program for the playground replacement at, um, Home Run Baker Park Sports Complex in Trapp. Uh, this playground is about twenty years old. It was put in around two thousand and six, and so it's due for replacement. Um, we're looking to do a, uh, surface that is, um, all accessible and ADA compliant, uh, hoping to use our funds wisely so that we don't have to do much, um, and just put in a really nice playground there to replace what's already there.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay.
Is part of that also sprucing up the baseball field as well?
Yeah, so we're, we're also looking to maybe possibly, we're, we're still working with the Little League to figure out exactly what projects, but some things are, um, the bullpens, adding bullpens to the fields, and just different minor fixes will be kind of thrown in there. We're looking to keep our budget for the playground to be around two hundred and fifty to seventy-five-ish, um, and then the excess fees would be for the ballfield fixes.
Okay.
Program Open Space does cover ninety percent. Um, it's a grant ninety percent, and then we do need ten percent local funds.
Okay, alright then. So, uh, we want to...
Well, we, we, uh, we, we have people out there who are, of course, wondering about Home Run Baker, and why is our park named for Home Run Baker? A son, a native son of Trapp, born in eighteen eighty-six, uh, and, uh, debuted with the Philadelphia Athletics in nineteen oh eight. Uh, he was prominent third baseman in Major League Baseball from that year until nineteen twenty-two. Played for first the Athletics and then later the Yankees. Earned his nickname Home Run Baker due to his impressive power hitting. During the dead-ball era, they didn't make, uh, hit as many home runs back then, particularly during the nineteen eleven World Series. Uh, he'd hit a number of crucial home runs, and the press dubbed him Home Run Baker, a name that stuck for the rest of his Major League career, and ultimately he was then inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame in nineteen fifty-five. From Talbot County.
That's good, that's good. So, okay, thank you, Pete.
I, I did have one question. I knew that this, I, this is the first time I can remember talking about Program Open Space Funds going to anything other than the gymnasium out at the Talbot County Community Center, and can you tell us about the status of that and, and how we're able to, we're, are we in fact now able to dedicate POS funding to other purposes around the, the county?
Yeah, so with the next few years, you'll actually be hearing me again to replace different playgrounds around the county, so, um, they're all coming up on their twenty-year life, lifespan. Um, most of them were put in in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and now's the time to start that replacement project. So, um, you know, we're looking at Cordova Park, we're looking at, in the, not this year, but in the future, Perry Cabin, replacing those playgrounds there. Um, but also just doing some minor fixes because a lot of that stuff hasn't been funded with Program Open Space for twenty years. So, we're looking to make improvements at those parks, um, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, is there a motion to go ahead and move forward with the plan as presented?
So moved.
This, this requires council action?
Mm-hmm.
Move that.
Yep.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Oh, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good, okay. Okay, Madam Secretary, introduction to administrative resolution, please.
Administrative Resolution Issuance by the Maryland Environmental Service of its Revenue Bonds to Fund Costs of Cell Number Five and Cell Number One of the Midshore Regional Landfill and Related Costs and Matters relating, relating thereto. And Administrative Resolution for the Purpose of Acknowledgement and Acceptance by the County Council of Talbot County, Maryland, the County of the Planning, Design, Construction, Equipping, and Operation of Cell Number Five and Cell Number One of the Midshore Two Regional Landfill in Caroline County, Maryland by the Maryland Environmental Service, the Service, and the Issuance by the Service of its Revenue Bonds in a maximum original aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty-eight million dollars for such purpose and related purposes as contemplated under the existing Waste Disposal Service Agreement, the Service Agreement, between the Service and the County as described herein, acknowledging the County's continuing obligations under the Service Agreement and as described herein, authorizing the approval, execution, and delivery of any additional documents, certificates, or instruments related to the contemplated financing by the Service, including a continuing disclosure agreement and generally relating to the issuance by the Service of such revenue bonds and the Service Agreement.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Welcome, Martha.
Good evening, council. Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County. Just reached my three-year anniversary by...
Nice, good.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Um, as you're aware, Talbot County is a member of a four-county partnership with Kent, Queen Anne's, and Caroline Counties that joined with the Maryland Environmental Service in an agreement that implemented a regional solution to the county's solid waste disposal needs by creating the Midshore Regional Landfill, which we call Midshore One and Midshore Two, which is in Ridgely. Within the agreement, MES is authorized to issue bonds to finance the cost of the construction of the landfills. This administrative resolution seeks council's approval to acknowledge and accept the issuance by the Maryland Environmental Service of revenue bonds that will fund the creation and operation of Cell Number Five and Cell Number One of the Midshore Two Regional Landfill in Ridgely, Caroline County. These are revenue bonds that will repeat, be repaid by revenue or, um, provided by the tipping fees charged at the Midshore Two Regional Landfill. These are not direct bonds or debt that is held by Talbot County. However, the county is contingently liable for the debt related to the Midshore Regional Landfills. Per the fiscal year twenty twenty-four financial statements for MES, the approval of this, um, sorry, the total outstanding debt for the Midshore Regional Landfill is seventeen million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions for council?
My, my understanding, Ms. Sparks, is that, uh, this sounds like a lot of money for a place to throw our trash, but, uh, the, these, these places are, to meet federal requirements are, are not, uh, inexpensive to operate and to build and operate, and that by building the additional cells in Ridgely at Midshore Two were staving off the day and the more expensive bill that will come with building the next landfill up in Queen Anne's County?
That is correct.
Okay, this is going to take action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Uh, second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Stepp?
Yep. Okay, Mr. Stepp, Stepp?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, all right. Next on the agenda is introduction of legislation.
A bill to authorize Talbot County, Maryland, the County to borrow not more than seven million, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars in order to finance and refinance improvements to certain wastewater facilities and sanitary district facilities in the county, and to effect such borrowing by the issuance and sale of one or more series of its general obligation bonds payable from ad valorem taxes to be levied by the county, exempting the bonds from the provisions of Sections nineteen dash two oh five and nineteen dash two oh seven of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, authorizing the consolidation of separate series of bonds into one or more bonds, authorizing the refunding of such bonds and relating generally to the issuance and sale of such bonds for such purposes.
Okay.
Good evening again, council. Um, this debt issuance through MDE is for our Talbot County Sanitary District, and it is related to construction costs related to Resolution two thirty-five. Resolution two thirty-five has been working to extend sewer service, rebuild the Royal Oak Pump Station, and connect properties to the Saint Michael's Region to a wastewater treatment plant. These general obligation bonds would reimburse construction costs already incurred or will be incurred because of this construction project. Resolution two thirty-five was adopted in November two thousand and sixteen, and the resolution extended sewer into the subdivisions of, I'm not going to pronounce this right, Avaley, Avaley, how do you pronounce that?
Avaley Farms.
Avaley Farms, okay. Doncaster, North Bend, the rest, and Acadia Shores, as well as certain subdivided Tier Three C areas along Royal Oak Road, Long Hall Road, Yacht Club Road, and Rolls Range Road. Um, in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, the rest, Long Hall Road and Yacht Club Road, Forest Maines, were installed and properties connected. During this time, it was determined that the Royal Oak Pump Station was also failing, so engineering was turned toward the rehabilitation of the pump station. In Phase One of Resolution two thirty-five, the design and rehabilitation of Royal Oak Pump Station was completed in two thousand and twenty-four. Phase Two, the force main and curve valve installation in the areas noted above was substantially completed in two thousand and twenty-four. Phase Three continues, uh, in, with the connection of the properties listed above to the sewer system. This construction project is currently underway and will run until early two thousand and twenty-seven. Currently, there are ninety properties from phase, uh, from, of the two hundred and fifty-four from Phase Two that have signed up, connected, and with thirty connections completed, so we are well on our way to making this a successful project for the Sewer and Tarry District.
That's great, good, good. Any discussion or questions, council?
Nope. Glad, glad to see this reaching its next step.
We've been trying for a long time to get it to this.
So, this requires just a show of hands?
Uh, for introduction.
Yep, for introduction.
So, introduced by Callahan, Lesher, and Milkie.
Okay, good job, Ms. Sparks.
Thank you.
Okay.
This will be known as Bill Number Sixteen Nineteen, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, August twelfth at five thirty P.M.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, um, all right, next on the agenda would be Bill Sixteen Seventeen. Madam Secretary?
Bill Number Sixteen Seventeen, a bill to amend Chapter one ninety zoning subdivision and land development of the Talbot County Code for the purposes of enacting regulations regarding dissolved air flotation, DAF residuals, food processing residuals, and liquid organic soil amendments, providing that the storage of such materials is a permitted use in agricultural conservation, AC, countryside preservation, CP, western rural conservation, WRC, and rural conservation, RC zoning districts, and defining terms associated therewith.
Okay, all right. Good evening, guys.
Good evening, council. Thank you. Bryce Yelton, Talbot County Planning and Zoning. Uh, we were before you at your last council meeting, uh, seeking introduction, or passing of this legislation as well. Uh, just a quick brief, this is about the dissolved air flotation, also called food processing residuals. Uh, DAF or dissolved air flotation is another way of consolidating solids out of a wastewater treatment plant. This is essentially just a process to remove sludge from wastewater in the treatment process, and some use that as fertilizer. Uh, this essentially seeks to create definitions in our zoning code to allow for certain types of storage for these DAF or food residuals in the county. Uh, our other local jurisdictions such as Caroline and Dorchester have enacted similar legislation the past year to restrict where these are placed on farms and different agricultural operations in the counties that they have, and this is essentially our way of doing that here in Talbot County as well. Uh, here to answer any questions, um, but just, um, looking forward to hopefully having this as a land use in our county code.
Okay, all right. Any, any questions, council?
No.
I will say that this is one of the more technical, uh, issues that we've, we've dealt with, uh, and I, I just want to express my appreciation for the staff and for the planning commission in working out the details of this, uh, such that when we, when we heard the public hearing, we, we didn't hear, uh, uh, resistance to this. Uh, we didn't hear concerns about how, how this was drafted, and I appreciate all the work that got this to the point where, um, this, this, this feels appropriate for Talbot County, and, and we certainly don't want to be the, the only jurisdiction on the shore that neglects to regulate this material.
Okay. And any other questions? Okay. All right, this is up for vote. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Okay, good job, guys. Thank you. Yep. Okay, Clay Stuff next.
Good evening, council. Under County Manager Report, this evening I have several items. First is, uh, board and committee appointments. The first one, Talbot County, or I'm sorry, Tal, the Talbot Family Network Board of Directors, um, were requesting your consideration for the appointment of Ms. Tina Jones to serve on that commission, or Board of Directors, I'm sorry.
Uh, I will move the appointment of Tina Jones.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay.
And the next, I, thank you, council. The next one I have is, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission asking council consideration for the appointment of Mr. Tom Costigan.
I move the appointment of Tom Costigan.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, council. That completes the board and committee appointments for this week. Uh, the first item I have from, uh, the departments is Rich Sutter here. Um, I don't see him.
See Rich.
See Rich, okay. Uh, the first one I have, council, the Hognet Golf Course is seeking council approval for the purchase of a Toro Workman two-hundred gallon green sprayer in the amount of sixty-five thousand, twenty-eight, uh, sixty thou, sixty-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents from turf equipment and supply utilizing a source, source well contract, which is a group purchasing contract that we normally, uh, use. There are sufficient funds in the capital A budget for this project.
Do you need a motion?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Yes.
And secondly, Hognet Golf Course is seeking the council's approval to purchase a reel grinder in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars from Finch Turf Incorporated utilizing sole source procurement, as Finch Turf is the only distributor for this equipment in the state of Maryland, a recognized distributor. Uh, there are sufficient funds in the capital A budget for this procurement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Council, I have a, um, announcement I'd like to make, uh, if you don't mind. So, due to ongoing concerns, the recycling bins at the Perry Cabin Park specifically, uh, their inca, incompatibility with nearby sports field activities, repeated misuse, including household trash, the council has authorized the Maryland Environmental Service to remove the bins from the park's parking lot. Uh, to continue supporting recycling, MES will place bins at the Talbot County Landfill on Barker Lane. Additionally, the Department of Public Works is working to develop a new recycling site to better serve the Bay Hundred area, and more information will be shared as plans move forward on that. Uh, so, um, they will be removed this week. Signs will be placed up, um, encouraging people to use other, um, areas for recycling, and then Ray Clark, who's in the audience, will be, uh, working to establish a site in the Bay Hundred area that will better serve everybody.
That sounds great, that sounds great.
And council, finally, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce an intern that we have, Mr. Caleb Schneck. If you could come up to the table, and I'll join you. Just so you don't have to sit alone out here. So, council, it's exciting. Uh, we have Ca, Caleb Schneck here. I'd like to introduce him to you. Caleb is an intern. He's interning with the county manager's office. He's, uh, soon to be a junior at the University of Maryland in College Park, and he's interested in government and, uh, in serving communities, and, uh, he's with us for the, uh, the rest of the month, and, uh, so far he's been to, uh, a number of meetings.
Nice.
He's been out the airport. He's been to planning and zoning. He's going to be going to corrections, and we'll make sure we get him out after. He'll be spending a day with emergency services, and when he wraps it up, he's going to give us a report. Um, the department has a report, and, uh, we're excited about that because, you know, we work hard every day to do the service for the community, but it'd be really interesting to see what it looks like through the eyes of a young man like Caleb. So, Caleb, uh, this is our county council, and I just wanted to get in to introduce you.
Uh-huh. Well, welcome, Caleb.
Um, it's a pleasure being here, and I'm glad I can help serve the, the county, and hopefully make the plan for, uh, you know, the next person, next high schooler, next college kid.
Sure.
Looking to come back here and help the, the county that we grew up in, kind of.
That's great, that's great. Well, you, you got a, you got a good mentor right beside you, that's for sure. Yep.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So, okay, any, any questions?
Welcome aboard.
Yep.
Just, uh, what, uh, the late Senator Paul Sarbanes told me maybe twenty years ago, we need good people in government, and that applies not only to elected office, but to, uh, to all the staff that, that serve the public as well. So, uh, thank you for stepping up and joining the ranks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, and that, that completes your county manager's report for this evening.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Rich. Clay?
Hey, Clay, um, just, Rich just come in to...
Uh, Rich, everything's good.
Everything's good.
Free to go.
You're approved.
Oh, well, thank you.
Oh, it's nothing.
Okay, okay.
He's, he's just never, he just never assumed a meeting would go this quickly.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, okay, let's go ahead and start with, uh, public comment, and we've got a little list up here and a few people, so you...
Yes, tho, those who signed up in advance, uh, have the privilege of going first, and first on the list we have Donna Albright.
Okay. And we'll go ahead and start. We got, we have a, a few people here tonight, so we'll, we'll give you around three minutes or so, okay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Donna Albright. My husband Larry Albright and I own property adjacent to Triple Creek Winery. I understand that the amendments to Bill Sixteen Eighteen, Chapter one ninety dash twenty-six point eighteen and one ninety dash twenty-six point one nine apply to all of Talbot County. However, if these amendments are passed, they will personally affect us and our neighbors. While the aesthetics upset us, for example, barbed wire fencing, security lighting in an industrial building, these amendments, if passed, would change the setbacks from five hundred feet to two hundred feet from residential property lines. Additionally, we are definitely opposed to the continuous odor. These amendments would change from strict odor control to some odor control. I believe Mr. Ferrera advised that, um, they could not totally one hundred percent mitigate all of the odor, and the proposed property is point eight five miles from Chapel District Elementary School. Uh, we are extremely concerned about groundwater contamination and depletion of our well. I've been doing my own research and have learned that cannabis plants require extensive amounts of water to grow, and the use of pesticides for outside growing, according to my research, has a strong possibility of groundwater contamination. Uh, I join with many concerned neighbors to circulate a petition opposing the amendments to Bill Sixteen Eighteen, Chapter one ninety dash twenty-six point eighteen, and one ninety dash twenty-six point nineteen, and any other changes proposed to the original bill. Since Saturday, we have approximately one hundred and fifty signatures in opposition, and I will forward copies of these to the council. Um, I also believe you've received many emails as well. So, prior to voting, if you are still considering approving the amendments, I ask you to speak to the Health Officer of Talbot County and do environmental impact studies. Um, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and next up is Bill Sep.
Good evening, council president.
Good evening.
And council members. My name is William Sep. I live at one-one-five-six-nine Old Cordova Road. We have been on that farm I have for eighty years. I do not want anything to devalue, change the way of life for my children, my grandchildren. The Chapel District Elementary School is a stone's throw from me. There is one field that separates this property that you're talking about changing or allowing to change. I don't know the proper numbers of zoning, but I do understand devaluation, upsetting neighbors, and possibly contamination. I farmed since nineteen sixty-two, and I have never seen on a schedule F form sale or proceeds from marijuana in an agriculture area, so I'm really quite upset about that, and I would hope that you would take this in consideration. There are many neighbors around there, and if you think it's so good, just drive by the Speeds Farm today, they're packing up and moving away. They don't want to stay. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and next up is Zach Lister.
Hi, my name is Zach Lister. I'm a student at Easton High School, a boy scout with Troop One Ninety, and a resident of Cordova. As one of my requirements as a boy scout, I have to complete the citizenship and the community merit badge. Some of these requirements include attending a council meeting and choosing an issue in my community that concerns me and discuss why I agree with one point of view than the other. In preparation, I have watched previous town council meetings, in particular, the July eighth council meeting, where some perspect- where some prospective buyers of a property near me who are speaking on Bill sixteen eighteen are requesting the proposed setbacks and odor regulations to be reduced. I'm here today to speak out against the request to reduce the bill's regulations, which allow a cannabis processing plant and growing facility to be so close to a neighborhood. One of the concerns is odor. These processing facilities release strong and unpleasant smells that can travel far. Without strict odor control requirements, it will make living near the facility unbearable for families, especially those with young children, seniors, or anyone with respiratory issues. Another issue that brings up concern is the proposal to reduce the setback from residential areas from five hundred to two hundred feet with, without permission from surrounding residents. There are already provisions in the bill being proposed that allows the five hundred feet to go down to two hundred feet with the permission of the residents. Changing this will allow the cannabis plant to be put into place without the consent of the people who will have to deal with it every day. Also, while Chapel Elementary School may be over the required distance from schools, in my opinion, and many others, that is still too close. Hundreds of other, hundreds of young children go to that school a year, and shouldn't be exposed to the smell or the risks of being near a cannabis processing plant. Finally, are the unknowns. This is a new industry for our county and in the country in general. What long-term effects would the chemicals leave to the air and water of the surrounding area that are used to grow the plants or reduce the odors emitted by the plants? I feel it is better to start off with more restrictions to this industry until we further learn about it. Thanks so much for your time and listening to my opinions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach, and I'll editorialize. When we have a member of our, a resident of our county who's under eighteen, who comes out to speak, not even a voting age, and yet he feels passionately enough about an issue to come out and speak so passionately and articulate about it, people take notice, and thank you for doing that. Next up is Bruce Carroll.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Carroll. I've lived in Cordova for thirty-nine years. I'm approximately two hundred and fifty feet from Triple Creek. I have three children and one on the way, and I don't think any parent should have to live next to a cannabis farm within a couple hundred feet. I agree with, like I said, I agree with everything they say, so I would like you to keep that in the back of your head about people and children.
Sounds great. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. That's, that is the end of those who signed up in advance, but it does not mean that this is the end of the public comment, so.
Right, sure. So anybody would like to come on up, public comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name's Perry Davidson. I've lived in Talbot County for thirty years. I lived in Centerville for thirty years. I live at one-one-one-seven-oh Meadow Ridge Road. I am a stone's throw from this property. I do feel it would devalue my property. I have grandchildren that come over, and I would not want them to have to look at this. So I would ask you not to let something like this happen in Talbot County, and it's just not a great idea. I appreciate you talking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Okay. Anybody else I'd like to come up? Yep. Yes, sir, come on up.
My name is, is Phil Rigan, two, my address is two-nine-seven-three-six Sullivan Drive here in Easton. I'm here to talk about something different than what has been discussed. I'm here to actually commend the county council once again for doing some really good stuff. Specifically, I, I've watched you over the last ten months, the amount of time I've been attending these meetings, watched you make public water sewer connections all over the county. I won't say all over the county, probably primarily perhaps down towards St. Michael's, but certainly public water sewer connections, where people now have well and septic, I assume. I've seen you use tax dollars for pump stations. I have, I apologize, I was late for this particular meeting. I assume that you took action on the pending item, which would commit some taxpayer money for the, for improving what wastewater facilities. I assume you did that earlier. If you didn't, you discussed it. What I'm trying to say here is, I cannot think, and I have no way of evaluating it, but I'm going to do some evaluation of it. I can't think of another county along the Chesapeake Bay that is doing as much or more than Talbot County. You know, these things that I'm talking about, were, I mean, they're not very sexy issues. They're wastewater, you're dealing with sewers, you're dealing with wastewater, all that sort of thing, but the net effect of that has to be reduced runoff into the Chesapeake Bay. It makes no sense that some of that is not going to go into the Chesapeake Bay. And I said about a month ago that you folks have deserved some sort of recognition from the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. I, I'm, I know a few people who used to work there, and I'm going to find out what sort of thing they do. So I do, you're not here, you're not here to get credit for stuff. I mean, that's not what your job is, but I think credit is due in certain circumstances, and I, I'm, I know I've made several comments about this, but I would like to do a little research. I would, I do think that you, you, the county deserves congratulations for what it's done, and that's leadership in this area. And my time is up.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Rigan. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great, great comments. I appreciate it. Okay, anybody else feel free to come up? Want to say anything? Anything good about us? That'd be great, you know? Okay. All right. Council comments?
I have none.
You have none? Okay.
I'll just further editorialize. Already, I already talked about our scout, Mr. Lister. He is in the troop that, where I am an adult leader, and the requirement for citizenship in the merit badge, citizenship in the Community Merit Badge say that you need to come out and observe a public meeting and, and be prepared to discuss an issue there. Mr. Lister went a step farther and testified in public. I look forward to attending Mr. Lister's eagle ceremony, which is still some time off. He's got more work to get, to do, but he will get there.
He definitely did a good job. I'm proud of you, that's for sure, so.
You cooked a good work.
Okay, all right. Mr. Lester, you want to go ahead and?
Nothing, nothing from you?
No, no, I think.
We're going to have a nearly record-short meeting here. The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, August twelfth, beginning at five o'clock P.M. The council will be convening in open session at three-thirty P.M. and then adjourning into closed session as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Tuesday, July twenty-ninth, the county council will be holding a work session at four o'clock P.M. to discuss the proposed administrative resolution to establish a senior citizens task force. The work session will be held here in the Bradley Meeting Room and is open to the public. Therefore, it's their motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene, as noted.
Show move.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
And I'll count as the second.
Yep.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Okay. Appreciate you guys coming out tonight. Thank you.